Evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's, tonight's city council meeting, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. If you'd all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could get a roll call.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan?
Here.
And Mayor Ballinger?
Here. All right, next up on the agenda is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Is there anything that we need to pull from the consent calendar? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion five zero. And next up, staff communications and updates. Who likes to start tonight first?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have the treasures report, animal control report, recreation report, development services, public works, building department, water department, and wastewater treatment plant reports for the month of February. The police department report will be presented at the next meeting. If you have any questions on any of these reports, please let staff know.
Any questions?
I have a question, but I think it's more for Justin. But it is on the water department. And there's a part there that says the, I'll hold on, I'm scrolling down here. The, what is it? It's how far down to the well?
Okay.
Well, water. Hold on, let me see if I can find it. There it is. Depth to water. Okay, so for, it's the, there we go. And so I was wondering if there is any, if we're able to get like the, like you have the historical February production totals up. Is there any way to get like a historical depth to water? Just to see where we've been and where we're going and how fast, in what direction we're going as well.
We'll find out.
Okay.
That out to you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the staff reports? All right. Anything particularly you'd like to call out? For staff communications or anything that you've got before we move on?
I got something.
Okay.
Real quick. Mayor, council members, just wanted to give you an update on the radar trailer. It's finally here. We put it together, all the works, put it together. We're working out details on how to deploy it, all this stuff. And the first place we're gonna put it over would be at Deborah Circle sometime this week.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good evening. So regarding the treasures report, there's not really any additional updates. Our outstanding balance at the end of February is about twenty-four million dollars. And you can see that they're separated into three different accounts, which is our Oak Valley for operational activities. And there's the state treasurer life account, a little bit over twelve million dollars. And our MAA pool investment, which is a little bit over eight million dollars. And I know in the staff report, I did something a little bit different where I included kind of like the differences and identify which funds they are. And most of them, it's related to pending claim reimbursement state requests from the state. So usually when it comes to reimbursement from the state, they're a little bit more slower. But I can guarantee you, next report, you'll see a couple more positive balances. So it'll address any negative balances. And addition to that, there's on our newsletter or on your March bill for the water rates, there was an increase per our study that was done from Hansford back in two thousand nineteen, where it addresses the two point five percent CPI increase. And there was a newsletter that was sent out at the beginning of January of this calendar year that addresses or notifies customers of the utility rates that there was an increase.
Thank you.
This is for year four of five years. So we are up into the year four of our water rate study that was approved in two thousand nineteen. So we, after that, we'll have one more increase in March of next year. But it's been going up every March for the last four years.
Would you mind explaining that to the, excuse me, to the community, how that would impact them?
So it's a, it's an increase to the water, the water services. And so there is an increase on the fixed bimonthly charge based on the meter size or the service charge. And then there's a use charge. So you have a base flat rate that everybody is charged for having water. And then there is a use charge per thousand gallons that is also assessed. And so both of them were increased. It came out on the flat fee to about five dollars and fifty cents each month. And then the usage charge, which these last few months are relatively low because it's winter time and we've had a lot of rain. And so everybody's turning off their sprinklers and conserving because of all the water. It's a fourteen percent or a fourteen cent increase on each per thousand gallons.
Thank you.
I have a question on that. So in the March twenty twenty-three newsletter, it was noted that the, as a friendly reminder that we're still in a drought. And after twelve atmospheric rivers since the first of the year, our residents are really saying, are we really in a drought? And I didn't know the answer. But what I was assuming is that because the state of California still has us technically listed as a drought, we still have to say we're in a drought, even though
Correct.
it appears that we have an overabundance of water.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so, so we still put all of the conservation, all of our conservation measures are still in effect because the state of California is still saying we're in a drought. So we just keep them running, status quo, since that's happened. Probably been what, three or four years ago? And we just status quo ever since. Do you have anything else, Sophie?
I think that was it. Thank you.
I have a number of items. Oh, did you have any questions on water, anybody?
Oh, will that change if we are receiving more from surface water? Since surface water, I mean, is in an overabundance, but we're not necessarily refilling the aquifers, which we're getting most of our water from wells. So does that, like, does that change once we incorporate that?
I'm not sure. We, we update our studies about every five years or so. And so that study will end next year. And then we typically will reenter into a new study or find a consultant to redo another study. And it will probably follow along with when we're moving forward with the SSJID project. And so at that time, everything will be reevaluated and reassessed. And so I'm not sure how, how it would affect her, if it would.
Okay.
Dominique, before you give your report, can I back up and ask Chief a question?
Sure.
So Chief, I appreciate the report on the radar trailer and putting it on Deborah Circle. As you know, two or three meetings ago, there were a couple neighbors that were here from First Street who were complaining about the speeding on First Street. So for our constituents, do you have a procedure? Or if a particular neighborhood wanted you guys to bring the radar trailer to their street to monitor, how would they go about doing that?
So they would just have to do a request to the police department requesting the radar trailer. So I, residents that were here a couple weeks ago, I got them on the list. So after we have the radar trailer at the Deborah Circle for a month, and then we'll move it to First Street. Now, if something else comes up or somebody else wants it somewhere else, then we'll move it. If not, we'll move it to where we believe a lot of traffic is going through, like McCannery and things like that. So we go by, by, by the requests. I also go by what the officers are seeing out there. And if they are seeing more speeders in certain locations, then we'll move the trailer over there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so Form seven hundreds. I have put a paper version of a Form seven hundred. I know it feels like for some of you, you guys just filled that out in the office. And now it's the annual. It is due April third. If you need any assistance filling out that form, let me know. But our next council meeting is also April third. And so if you're able to bring it back at that meeting, that would be great. But also feel free to stop it by at City Hall and/or drop it off in our Dropbox if it's after hours. And staff will get that over to me and we'll get that filed for you. Liberty Business Park update. I reached out to the companies that I had requested quotes from. And one of them had indicated they would get a quote to me by today. And I have not received the quote, so I don't have any, any additional quotes than the one that I was originally given at twelve thousand five hundred. And that was for a feasibility and market rate study on moving forward with that project. And we did mail out updated letters to all of the property owners that had not responded to, to our original inquiry. It was a survey basically asking, you know, for them to reach out to us, to either contact us, email us, or, or give us a call, indicating any plans for their land and trying to establish some type of communication with them. And we did not receive any additional feedback from any of the other ones that had not responded the first time. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I do have those companies expected to submit a quote. And so I'm sure that's probably gonna come in. It just didn't come in today or by today so that I would have it for the meeting. And so it, it probably, it should probably come in this week. I'm not really sure how busy they are or why they haven't finished that or not. But that's where we're at with, with that project at this point in time.
Many, so how many landowners or property owners have we heard back from?
We've heard back from a total of four.
Out of how many?
Nine. And there's eleven parcels, nine different property owners, according to parcel, parcel map or tax assessor records. So I received an email from the League of California Cities. This is in regards to SB thirty-five and SB four twenty-three. They are asking the cities for letters to oppose an opposition. They're extending out the streamlined housing approvals for multifamily housing developments in accordance with SB thirty-five. And so I know when it comes to SB thirty-five and, and losing that local control, that this council may be interested in us throwing a letter in there. And I wanted to just make sure that that would be okay to do. And I would get that letter prepared and sent over to the League of California Cities tomorrow. That be fine?
I'm good with that, yes.
That's, that's opposition, like no opposition would be to prevent thirty-five from being extended?
Correct. So what they're planning to do is remove the twenty twenty-six sunset and make SB thirty-five statutes permanent. They're also looking to apply the thirty-five, SB thirty-five provisions to cities that have not been found in substantial compliance with the housing element law by that department. And then also approving housing developments on property they own or lease without being required to follow local zoning and development standards and prohibits the city from enforcing inclusionary housing ordinance if the income limits are higher than those in SB thirty-five. And so the league is, has reached out to us. They're, they're sending out a template letter with all of the city's names. But they've also asked for a letter specifically from, from our council as well. So I just want to make sure that would be fine to do.
Just for the council's information, there's actually a hearing on this tomorrow at one thirty with Senator, with Senator Weiner. But for the constituents, you know, we, there was a project that came before council and actually came before the planning commission last year. And it was ultimately the developer pulled out. But that was all related to SB thirty-five. And here we are again. And now it takes away, wants to make all of the local control out of the city's jurisdiction. So I would, I would request that the constituents, please feel free to write a letter as opposed, in opposed to this. Sorry, one other thing. I received a email from a constituent that noted that the city of Elk Grove now is actually in trouble with the state because they opposed a project related to SB thirty-five. And now the Secretary of State is coming after the city of Elk Grove. So they're one hundred percent serious that they're coming after cities that deny, that deny an affordable housing project, product, project.
There's more than, there's more than a few cities right now are in trouble.
Yeah, and so what the league has indicated, you know, what they're against is taking away from that local control, applying that one-size-fits-all legislation and, and making sure that the cities that don't agree with that put in a letter. What they're also asking to do is that the governor and lawmakers include three billion dollars annual investment in the state budget to help cities prevent and reduce homelessness and spur housing development. It's targeted ongoing funding that would assist the cities in, in dealing with these community-based solutions. And so that would be a part of that as well. If I have direction, we can, we can put our letter in opposition and
We just need consensus?
I do. I just need a consensus to move forward and I'll send it out tomorrow.
If you have anything to protect local control, for me, I'm good.
Yeah. I would second that.
Anybody else? You good with that?
I agree.
Can you send it like in like forty-eight font? Heck, no. Don't take our local power away from us.
I'm sure they're gonna get a lot of letters. But yes, I will make it as bold as I can. And then also, let's see here. It's come to the city's attention that residents in, in some of the mobile home parks here in town may have had their rent increased, not necessarily in accordance with state law. And so we're asking council if they would be interested in either putting a resolution on the next agenda to send to HCD, asking for that to be looked into in accordance with HCD. And we'd have legal counsel assist us with doing the resolution. Or drafting a letter on behalf of the city council to send to HCD. I'm wondering if council would support that.
I would definitely support that. Obviously, I'd defer to Frank what he thinks the best course of action would be for that. But we have to stand up, stand up for our citizens when we have, when we can.
I agree, anything we can do, the quickest course of action on that that we can do, I would be in supportive.
Can we do both?
Yeah, we could. We could file a formal complaint and also send a letter. So I'll, I'll work with Dominique on that and we'll bring back something for the council to take action on.
I'll add that to the next agenda. Okay. I also have an item regarding cell phones for city council. We do not have a policy in place for issuing council members' cell phones. And so I'm coming to the council as a whole to ask whether or not we would be interested in creating a policy and, and allowing council members to have a city-issued cellphone. Any feedback or direction on that? We would take to the next meeting to move forward on.
Thoughts?
Thoughts? I would say, I don't see any reason that I would personally need one. But, you know, maybe someone else on the board does.
I currently have two. I'm not looking for a third. I am, I'm fine. I have no reason to put an expense on the city for a cellphone myself.
And it would be voluntary, so it's not required. So anybody who would be interested, we would bring a policy forward to the next meeting, have council review that, and then we would move forward with, with issuing phones to whoever is interested.
So when, we did go to a training, an ethics training back in January. And so what is currently recommended by the city? We have a cellphone, or no, we have a landline given to us. And we, it is recommended not to use our own personal phones and devices to communicate with other elected officials and other doing business, city business, on our own personal devices. That has been recommended to us by legal and by staff. And so what is recommended is that we do have a phone. It's a landline that comes to the city. And so it's recommended that we have people call that phone number. And that phone number has a voicemail. That voicemail will then be transcribed to our email. And then we are to get our voicemail from constituents and other elected officials to our emails. And it is transcribed. And it is recommended that how we call back is that we should come into this office Monday through Friday from eight to five, is it? Eight to four, the op, the open hours of the office, Monday through Thursday, to return any phone calls that we receive from anybody to do city business. So that is the recommended policy right now, is not to use our own personal devices. And so that is the reason why I would think a, at least an issued phone number. If we are to provide our own device to be able to receive calls from that number, I guess that would be something that I would, I guess I'd purchase a, I'd be willing to get a device, give it to the city and then issue. I, I just don't feel comfortable using my own personal device to do city business. So that's my opinion on that. And it's also impeding with my ability to communicate with people since I have to come into this office Monday through Thursday during my business hours. So I have to come in here to be able to call people. So that's, that's really where my, where I stand right now, is it's impeding my, my communication as legal has, has request or has recommended to me.
I think that, I mean, we should offer it. And if somebody wants it, then they can take it. If somebody doesn't want it, they don't have to take it. Leave it up to the individual council members to make that decision. That's, that's my opinion.
I guess the question is, what are the costs associated with said phones? I'd like to have that come back when we come back with an idea of a policy. I want to know what extra excess cost that is involved with that, as we don't currently pay for that. Like to know what is gonna increase our budget, if we're gonna do it, and how many people are interested in doing it. At some point in time, you have to, if you have a policy, you have to assume all five are gonna do it.
Yeah.
So that's the expense, the number that has to be considered, whether we all decide to take a phone or not.
So the phones right now are between fifty and sixty dollars each.
And I would also be interested in what other city councils' policies are on that and what comparative cities are and, and what their policies are if they're, have a similar policy.
Something else, just for consideration on this is, so I've looked into it. And there is a Google Meet for business subscription where you can pay ten dollars a month and get assigned a phone number. And you can do all text messaging, you can do phone calls, you can do everything that you can with a cellphone, per se. It just uses voice over IP. And so that may be another avenue to consider where you don't have another device, per se, but you have a Google Meet phone number that's linked to your city email address.
Okay, so are we all in consensus? I've put together, I'll look into what other cities have policy-wise, kind of put together a package and a recommendation of a policy and bring it back at the next meeting? Sound good?
I mean, I'd leave it up to the mayor here.
Either, either way, I'm, I don't need a phone, so.
I don't either. I, I use the, 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 what do you call it? The email address that you've, your iPad that you give me. And it seems to be working just fine, so I don't see any necessary need for the extra burden on the citizens. But to each their own.
Take a look and come back with some more information. That's what I'm thinking. That's the consensus up here.
Do we current, we currently have cell phones issued to the heads of departments, though, through the city? Is that correct? Okay. Do you know how many do we have issued through city and city staff?
Well, all of, each public work staff has a phone because they utilize it throughout the day. Department heads have phones. And then we have ED. All of our officers have a phone as well. It wasn't originally like that. They were sharing phones, but we just recently updated the budget to give them each a phone because they were having the difficulty of sharing it and missing calls because voicemails were being left on the same phones. And so we gave them each of their own phone to follow up on reports and speak to members of the public on those lines. So I can look into that. I'll get a total number of how many phones we have. And I can bring that stuff as well. We'll bring that all back at the next meeting.
Anything else?
That is it.
That's your list? All right.
My list, thank you.
Then we're gonna move to item number four, an update from Commission on Aging Representative Ann Shetix.
Thank you. I wanted to tell you that in conjunction with the county, we have put together a brochure for our seniors for the local, for the organizations that they could call for different situations. Many of these came up during the pandemic. People were asking for phone numbers for contacts. So we recorded all of those and the county added some as well. We've printed them in limited number right now only because we're asking for you to look at it, to give us your feedback. And then we'll print them and we'll make sure the city has some to hand out to seniors. We have delivered some to the, to the mobile park. And we will also be taking some out to the Heritage House. So we're really proud of this. And Krista Adams is the one that's, that's put it all together for us. And the seniors at the meeting this month were just very, very happy to get it. But then they gave us another job. So we're starting now our second one. And I'm gonna really need your help with this one. What they want is a list of people that are available to help them mow their lawns, help them with computers, housekeeping, those types of things. So we are working on that right now. We will be sending something out to you, asking for your feedback, asking if you have names, contacts, whatever. Our only request, my only request is that we're not asking everybody to make it pro bono, but I am asking for a senior discount for these people for their services. But that will be between you and the person that you're going to be working for. But our seniors very much now and then need help. And so we're working on putting that together. So I wanted to update you that we're working on this for seniors. Please give us your input on this. And then we'll revise it and send it and we'll probably add some more to it. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Appreciate that. Ian? We'll get that in a second. I was letting her sit down. I was gonna get there. And he had a question here, so. Next up, as matters presented from the audience, the public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required due to state law. Action will not be taken on any item that is not on the agenda. And except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If a required action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether or not it is within the subject matter of the city is at the discretion, discretionary decision made by the mayor. At that point, we'll open it up.
All right, Cody Fowler, fifteen fifty Judith. I'm gonna provide a little insight because I am a telecommunications specialist by trade. You guys as provider, TPX or Telepacific, whoever they are this week, should offer you guys, you guys currently have voice over IP phones? Is that accurate, Dominique?
I believe so, yeah.
So most all providers now will offer an app for your existing personal cellphone that will tie to an existing voice over IP line. That voice over IP line does not have to have a voicemail or a phone, but physical device. It can be just like a voicemail line, et cetera, and it should be dirt cheap. And when you download the app onto your cellphone, you can answer calls on the app. And when you download the app onto your cell phone, you can answer calls on the app if you so desire. But if you have to call one of your constituents back, you call them back through the app and then it displays like City of Escalon and, you know, the main city phone number. And that may be a very low cost alternative to sixty plus dollars for a cell phone. And that's something that TPX should be able to offer if they cannot, uh, email me and I will refer you to a provider that can.
Appreciate that.
Money savings. Uh, the other thing we could do is maybe print double sided. Let me save a little bit of paper, maybe, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks for the input, Cody.
Anybody else out there?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, just as a procedural thing, uh, I had a comment on this annexation. That's under administrative matters and the city attorney's taken, uh, taken umbrage with talking about things that aren't public hearings. So, uh, are we going to be able to comment, uh, on the administrative matters or should I bring it up now?
No, you'll be able to.
By the time it's on call, yeah, you'll have time at that point, yes.
There he is. How many wells do we have?
That is on the report. I believe we have four, um, that are currently active.
What stratus are we on?
What's what, inter?
What stratus? What rock formation stratus?
I am not.
The depth of your well.
I'm not familiar with. Let's see here if that's on here.
Are you on black rock? Are you on red rock? Are you on clay?
I am, I'm, I'm unsure.
I'm sure there's something we can look up for you and we can have the city staff get back to you with those answers.
Yeah.
I was wondering what the reason is for water prices to go up if, depending over what stratus we're on, it holds the water.
It has a lot to do with the cost ministered for the projects that were involved with that.
Yeah, so the, the water rates, um, are specific to the projects that the city has moving forward, um, to either replace wells, make repairs to wells, uh, piping, uh, lift stations. I'm kind of getting into sewer too, but, but any type of capital improvements as well as ongoing maintenance that's needed for public city systems are incorporated into your water rate studies. Um, and so basically it's, it's utilized for a five-year period. And so the consultant works with the city and staff and we, and we put together a plan of what projects need to be done, uh, specific to water. We have various repairs and things that need to be replaced, whether it's generators, pumps, motors, those type of things. And, and address those within the rate study and, and put that into the rate study so that the rate is updated to the problem that.
Are we that fast?
No, we're not at all.
Can we get something in writing on that? Get it into the public so they know what.
The water study is on our website.
We have a water study that's on our website. The, the water study is a very detailed report that has all of the projects, explains the history of the water system, um, and, and gives all of the information as to why, why the monies are needed to make those improvements, um, as well as the rate calculations.
Thank you.
No problem.
David Willis, 425 Sultana. This is just a matter of, of, I think, public safety. Last week I was over at the plaza there where the Burger King and the Taco Bell are. And I have, and in the past, but this last week I saw three cars leaving through where it says no exit. And in one of them, an accident was missed. I don't know how they didn't hit each other. And, uh, and also when the big trucks deliver stuff for, you know, the Taco Bell or whatever, especially the Taco Bell, they're further in. And the only way they can really get out is out the way they're not supposed, you know, not supposed to. Because if you go the backstreet sometime, cars are parked so close to the driveway, they can't make the turn. And they can't make the turn that goes out, you know, that's designated the exit. So you might look into, uh, finding, you know, maybe removing those no exit signs. And because people come out and I mean, they literally, they didn't see a stop sign, but they just shot straight across. You know, so anyway, thank you. Just before somebody gets hurt.
Is that, can I ask a question on that? Is that city or is that a private property issue? That's private property?
It's a private po- parking lot, yes.
And so we don't really at this point have any jurisdiction over how they do their entrance and exits?
How they, how they exit? We, the city was directed by past council in the past to put these signs out for the no exit in that area. Um, and that's because they're pulling out of a private driveway onto a public road. Um, and so we did put those signs up, I'd say maybe four years ago. Um, and then it was a education transition, um, because a lot of people exit out that way. And so for a while we did have officers kind of monitoring the area. And then I don't know if you've had any recent issues with that exit.
It's an ongoing issue with that exit. It, uh, I mean, the signs are real big and people just ignore them and they go out that direction. We've, we've cited people before for that. I don't believe anybody has challenged us in court, um, but we, if we see somebody going on the wrong way, we stop them. Depending on the, the contact, they either get a ticket or they don't get a ticket. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Was, wasn't that originally a two-way?
Yeah, the original was the entrance and exit.
So was there a reason why we, that went away in the first place? Like in other words, what, what was the justification to change it in the first, do you, do you know, or?
I don't know for sure, but my understanding was because the same thing, cars going in and out of there was causing a traffic jam. So they just wanted to make it a one-way in and then make the other two access to go out. So they just wanted to make the flow to go in and not have it in and out.
And I understand what Dave's saying. I've seen it a couple of times myself. It's like a, like you said, maybe an education thing. I'm not quite sure, but it seems might be worth looking into if maybe it is a better way to go back to how it was originally.
The reason we did it back in Ed out, the reason we did it is because if people couldn't back out anymore because there's too much traffic going both directions. And that's why we went and tried to do that. It's been a problem ever since because people don't obey the law. If the people obeyed the law, there wouldn't be a problem. In terms of unloading their materials and stuff, that is an issue, but the, they tend, they tend to do it and they get it done. I think if you take it out, you're going to go back to the same jams you had before where people can't get out of the parking spots because cars are coming and going both directions. That's why we did that.
Chief, do you think it would help if you reached out to the, uh, property owner and just said, "In good faith, we put up these do not enter signs. Seems like people are still abusing it. Can you do anything as the property owner to help us mitigate this problem?"
Yes, I can reach out to property.
I think that's probably a good start because the city, the city did something in good faith and, I mean, obviously you don't have the resources to have an officer sitting there to ticket the people, but I think that discussion should start first with the property owner and say that technically this isn't our problem. We did something to try to help you four years ago. Problem's still not resolved, so what are you going to do about it?
I can do that.
Thanks.
My observation would be that the exits are, well, the one exit, the main exit is not accessible to a large truck right now. And, and so if we were able to reach out to see if we can widen that or make it more of a long shot to make the exit easier to exit than that entrance exit might work out a little bit better. And also put up signs better to see the exit. Like if you're not from Escalon, it is hard to navigate to see how I'm, how you're supposed to get out of that parking lot.
And that was developed, that development.
Right.
The guy out of Lloyd, Lloyd Diddy made that, had that development. The problem with Lloyd Diddy was he had us over a barrel. We were financially strapped and had no way of getting revenue. So we bent over backwards and let him do whatever he wanted. What we didn't get was a delivery lane in the back of the building like we should have had and a few other things we should have had. But he had us over a barrel, we were desperate for money, and we bent over backwards to give whatever he wanted. That's why it's all the way it is today. It's a mess. It always has been from day one. Another question I have beyond all this is, did we ever have a hydrologist come and show us the water, uh, content under this city and the area that we're drawing from? I don't think we've ever had a hydrologist show up here and do that.
No.
My recommendation is you should look into it. And I'll tell you why. Not that I'm opposing the surface water treatment plant, but it'd be nice to know how much water we truly have and what timetable we're working off of. Because we don't know. No one's ever presented us an actual factual showing of the water levels under our community and how much time we may or may not have based on our current draw and the draw around us. It's something worth looking into before we get too crazy here. Because we don't know. We might have more water here we even know or we may not. So either way, it's going to venture from knowing. So a hydrologist is who we need to hear from, somebody who understands what's underneath us, be able to explain to us that. Because we don't know. So we're guessing.
Anybody else?
With staff, i- if we had a hydrologist come before, uh, do this.
We don't need to hire anybody. SSJID is part of this groundwater, uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Danziger. One second. If, if a, a hydrologist would still do this, we would still have to comply with the state issues which have kind of, are the driving force behind the surface water, correct?
We are in a overdrafted basin. So my understanding would be that even if we had significant levels of water in, in Escalon, the basin we're in is still overdrafted and so we would still have to move forward to meet state law requirements, which are you're in an overdrafted basin. These are, these are the things we need you to do to help.
Where did that information as far as overdraft basin, where did that come from?
Like what you were saying, uh, SSJD, the City of Ripon and the City of Escalon are all, uh, together in a, a groundwater sustainability group, a GSA. Um, and so we make quarterly to discuss those things.
So were you, were utilizing the data that was presented by SSJID? That SSJID is basically saying you're in an overdraft and?
No. The Department of Water Resources is telling you that.
I think we're getting a little bit farther down the rabbit hole on matters presented from the audience on this topic, so I think we need to.
And Mayor, and Mayor just be clear, you should probably call on the speakers at the time they're going to speak and then just so there's not this back and forth and turns into public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I thought, I thought the information might be helpful since nobody knew what your, what your question, or the answer to your question was. Yeah, it doesn't take a genius to be looking down 120 towards Lathrop and Manteca and Modesto on the other side coming at us. We may stay small, but there's a lot of straws going into our glass of water. If you want to know, uh, Melinda, uh, what we've been doing over time, you've got a, a start right there with the first page from Matt Morgan. Just pick a month. I, I always pick March and then I just write depth of well, depth, depth of water. And I've been doing that since 2016 because that's as far back as the agendas go. So we've lost about 10 feet, uh, since then. It looks like it's come up a little bit, you know, under current conditions, but all we need is, you know, more building going on, more suction out of there. The overdraft isn't the, the only problem, it's subsidence. You know, this is a tank with a flexible lid. If any part of that lid starts to fall, your capacity is going to drop off. But, you know, to Ed's point, you don't need to hire somebody. They already have geologists, they've already mapped this aquifer and they should have all that information readily available. And I think, you know, we're part of that, uh, groundwater sustainability, uh, group that we should have that information readily available to us. So I just thought I'd fill that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, may I comment? May, oh, wait till, hey, city manager, sorry, interrupt you guys for a second. Maybe we should get some more definitions on these things, um, so there's more clarity and maybe reach out. I don't know if you would get, you guys would be on board with that or not, but just to get a little more clarity as to, you know, where, where do we stand currently and, you know, uh, where do they think we're going to be after this snowpack and stuff? They've probably got ways to estimate that, I would think.
Okay, we can find out.
Anybody else out there in the public that would, uh, like to speak at the podium tonight? Anybody online at this point with our meetings at this point? Is anybody online that would like to speak? Here's your opportunity. All right, hearing crickets at this point, we're going to move on, close the matters presented from the audience, move on to presentations number five. Sidney Stone from Christian Church Homes. Podium is yours.
Thank you. And I will say that I had a dinner at Happy Garden tonight and I did follow the signs, so.
Thank you.
I made my left and I went down to where the site was and took some nice pictures. So, um, I'm going to kind of give an overview of the proposal that we submitted last year on the city site and the city RFP. I'll give you a little bit of background on Christian Church Homes, what we do, what we're doing right now, um, our thoughts about this proposal and such, and then, you know, I'll take any questions and answers after that. And so the, uh, first slide here is, uh, oh, no, not that one. I'm going to skip that one because I made a mistake on that. So you'll, you'll see as you look at it, the mistake I did. Actually, on the rendering, actually, just, just go back to the rendering there. So this is, um, basically the rendering of what our proposal would be. So, uh, eighty units on four acres, all single story. Uh, we are actually doing this model in Chico right now and it's actually going to be under construction at the end of the year. Uh, we received, uh, twelve million in disaster funding from the state. Uh, it's a, it's great eighty units, uh, twenty fourplexes, uh, again on four acres, uh, you know, similar to what we would do here on a phase one. So that is pretty much the basis for our proposal is just taking what we have done successfully in Chico and then doing it right here in Escalon. So, okay, go down now to pass the next one because you'll see I made a mistake there. And then, uh, give you a background here on Christian Church Homes. So we've been in operation now for sixty-one years. Uh, we are currently in six states with four thousand units and all we do is affordable housing for seniors, uh, independent living. It's been our basis for sixty-one years. It is what we are successful at. Uh, it is what has made us, uh, as a nonprofit profitable. Uh, we currently have forty million in reserve right now. We, uh, had a fallow period during the 2010s in terms of new construction because the financing in the state didn't quite match what we were doing. Uh, you know, HUD got rid of all their senior financing, our days went away, as you know. And so, uh, we basically focused for about ten years there with just a couple new developments and then did our rehabs, refinancing, things like that. Uh, over the last year or so, we have gotten back into the new development game. Uh, you'll see, uh, coming up in another slide that I've got three projects under construction this year. Uh, one in Reading, it's sixty units. Uh, that is going to be under construction in June. Uh, that is a nine percent tax credit project and with about six or seven other subsidies on that. Uh, we also have the Chico project coming up. And then in Hayward, uh, we're doing a TOD project, uh, in Hayward next to a Bart station. Again, that's eighty units. Uh, that's a five-story product, not what we would put here in, uh, Escalon, obviously. Uh, we're going to be focusing on that single story. So a little bit more background on Christian Church Homes, how we get our developments and how we, uh, do our development and such is, you know, we get our land basically three different ways. Uh, we started as an offshoot of the Disciples of Christ denomination and since then, uh, we work with them. We also work with Methodist Church. We also work, uh, with Episcopalian denominations now as well. And so close to, um, Escalon here, we have a West Sacramento project that is in operations. I have a GALT project that we are working with both the city and the local Methodist Church. I'm doing a three scattered site development. That's going to be between sixty and eighty units and I'm using the city site, I'm using the Methodist site and I'm using a private seller site. So actually in one project, you can see the three different sources of where we get our land and where we get our projects from. Uh, we also have, uh, going down south, three current developments in Visalia. I am working on our fourth one right now. Uh, we also, uh, have, are working on a deal in Brentwood with the Episcopalian Church. Uh, and we have several, uh, current developments that are already in operation in Antioch and Pittsburgh. So for this kind of area, those are our closest ones. What really excited me about Escalon was the. What really excited me about Escalon was it kind of filled that kind of hole in between what we have in Visalia, what we have in West Sacramento, what's going on in Galt, and so this was just kind of a nice little, um, area that we could go ahead and put our next development in, so... Now, let's see. Well, I'm going to talk a little bit actually about how we run, um, our developments and what our core values are, and why we've been in operation now 61 years. So we are almost a fully integrated company from the standpoint of, we have development in-house, we have service coordination in-house, we have finance in-house, we have our property management in-house. The only thing that we don't have in-house is a GC. We usually utilize a local GC. So for instance, on our Chico and Reading projects that'll be under construction this summer, I'm using SunSari out of Chico. Uh, in Hayward, we're using an East Bay-based GC. Um, I'm down south now doing a development in Corona. Uh, we have a GC down there who'd be working on that one. On some of our out-of-state stuff, like Colorado, right now we have our second Colorado development that's going for tax credits. Uh, we're using again a local GC, a local architect, local financer in that area. So we try to, you know, again, use local people as much as possible. And our core values and our interim CEO is actually, uh, the son of the founding family, and so they have been, you know, like I said, involved in this for like 60 years. And, you know, he wanted to make sure that I talked about our core values that have been with the company for that long. Uh, our core values are caring, really. Our residents always come first, and as a nonprofit, we're able to do that. Uh, community, really creating a nice community, and that is why certain areas, we have multiple projects in that area because the cities enjoy doing business with us so much. Uh, Reading, I'm working on our fourth project. Visalia, we're working on our fourth project. Colorado, again, asked me to come back to do a second project in Colorado, and so on and so on. Um, sustainability, and when I say sustainability, I'm not just talking environmental, but I'm also talking financial, I'm talking services, I'm talking for our residents so that, you know, they get access to whatever services they need. We have educational classes, we, and it, and it's all tailored actually to that individual development. So I actually have some developments that are like, uh, majority of Vietnamese, for instance, right? So we do a lot of classes for that culture. For another, uh, development in Santa Ana, we do something completely different at that, um, development, uh, which may be completely different from what we do in Visalia. So we tailor all of our programs, all of our services, what we bring to the community based really on that individual, um, development. And then integrity, uh, again, one of our core values and why we've been doing this for 61 years and why we continue to grow now and are back doing new development because, uh, CCH just has a great reputation in the affordable housing industry. Um, and then finally, independence, you know, our thing is, is that we really do work with seniors uh, to be independent, to live independently. We don't do assisted living. Uh, we're generally not in the special needs homeless game, although, uh, occasionally we will have some set aside units. For instance, in Reading, I have set aside units for developing disabled. Um, I also have a couple set aside units for mentally ill homeless, but it's not something that we majori- that we majority do, uh, in our developments. I'm sure that's probably more than you really want to know about senior, about Christian Church Homes. Uh, now, why senior housing? Uh, I think we all know about the demographics right now of senior housing. The one demographic, uh, that is increasing the most in homelessness, uh, are seniors. Uh, because especially now with, uh, inflation, social security doesn't go up as fast as inflation. Uh, a lot of seniors have not planned for retirement. You know, the seniors who don't have a home, they can't afford rent, they can't afford to buy a home, so... I know in Sacramento County right now, the number one demographic for increasing homelessness, um, is seniors. And then I told you about our 2023 construction projects. And then we can go to the slide that actually shows what our proposal was last year.
With the site plan?
Yeah. Actually, that's where I went, uh, yesterday after, or today after dinner. We have, basically, this could go a couple different ways, right? It all really depends on the financing. And right now, we are in a, um, shall we say, unique financing environment now over the last couple of weeks. Uh, in fact, I was talking to, uh, our investor and equity partner in Reading, which is US Bank, and even they are like, we have no idea what's going to happen over the next week or two, so... Uh, it definitely is a, is, is a unique environment right now, so this project could definitely go a couple different ways. Uh, we have the phase one, which is on just slight, you know, just shy of five acres, which would be our, uh, single-family development. Uh, it has 80 units, 79 parking spaces, it's got a nice clubhouse, uh, a new public street. And again, that could be financed a couple different ways. That could be financed as your typical subsidized affordable housing. Uh, we would look at a market study to see what potentially could be the demand uh, for maybe a moderate middle-income senior development, especially since we're doing single-family homes. And, and that kind of market analysis would actually inform whether or not we do this in phases, or maybe we actually look at one complete phase on the whole site. Uh, and again, that would be depending on the market study, that would be depending on the financing, because there are tons of financing programs out right now for middle-market developments like that, so... Uh, we could either do, again, the phase one as your typical subsidized, look at it as a mid-market, or maybe just do the whole thing as a mid-market. So some of the design attributes, again, the clubhouse is really nice. It's a 4,000-square-foot, uh, clubhouse. Uh, looking at the, uh, architecture and the landscape, as you can see, that single, uh, story, and the reason why we like that single story, especially on large plots like this, is it really does cut our construction costs, and it gives me, again, a bunch of different avenues to finance something like this. Uh, in Chico, and I'll give you an example, in Chico, uh, for the 80 units, we're actually under 400,000 a unit on that, which for a, for a affordable housing development is actually great because we're only coming in around 30 million for 80 units, uh, compared to, let's say, our Hayward project, the five-story next to Bart, uh, which unfortunately did use SB 35, which because it has, which because SB 35 adds prevailing wage, I'm not a big fan of SB 35, uh, the cost of that's going to be like 55, 56 million, so... Uh, we're not doing a project like that again if I can do all these single-story projects at about half the cost. I don't have elevators, uh, my infrastructure is much nicer. You know, I, there is so much of the, kind of that building envelope that I don't have to do. I'm just doing bungalows that I can copy throughout California, Washington, wherever we're going, so... And then again, uh, let's see, what else? I'm just going to, I'm going to hit some of the high points here. So, uh, we propose, uh, the new road to go through. Uh, the 9.6-acre affordable housing community, uh, again, with two phases. Uh, one of 80 units, the second phase roughly the same as well. Uh, it provides for the flexibility, the planning and development of a future, uh, community park. I know that's one of the city's, uh, priorities. And again, you've got the covered front porches, uh, passeos, a lot of open space. Uh, what we're doing in Chico, for instance, is like the clubhouse, is we're doing a design where the, uh, multipurpose room part of the clubhouse has really good indoor/outdoor feel, so that depending on the weather, we could do, you know, classes that flow both in and out. Uh, we can do our community events, we can do, uh, our community gatherings where we have to give information and stuff. Uh, you know, usually in our clubhouses, there is a game room, there is a light computer room. Sometimes there's a fitness room, but it all really depends on the community. Some of our communities don't use the fitness room at all, so we take that out, and we make it like a big, uh, game room, library, bingo room. So it all really depends on, you know, the individual community. And I think those are the highlights. Is there anything else, Dominique, that you wanted me to highlight on this?
No, not that I'm aware of.
You have renderings?
Questions, yeah.
There were some pictures with renderings. If you could flip through the slideshow, I know we haven't had all of them.
Yeah, so if you look at the, um, back, two pages, you can see kind of how we've laid this out in Chico. You've got two on the front, two on the back, so it's basically 24plexes. No, it's a single story. The, uh, upper level is full, so there is no, there's nothing up there.
Are these, um, one and two-bedroom units or just one-bedroom units?
Uh, in Chico, we have all one-bedrooms with just a two-bedroom managers' unit. Again, we would look at the market to see if it can absorb some of the two bedrooms. The reason why we don't do too many two-bedrooms is because, uh, for affordable, for affordable reasons, it becomes too expensive for somebody to rent a two-bedroom.
So you had mentioned, um, this would be, it can be specifically targeting, um, uh, middle income with subsidized middle-income seniors?
Yeah, that's one of the financing plans, is there are a couple of programs through the state and that they're actually putting more money in to target kind of moderate, affordable. So that would be something, you know, like between the 60% to 120%, uh, AMI level, which, uh, for an area like Escalon is almost market rate, so, you know, we would probably look at like that 60 to 80% AMI. All right, in our charter, we can go up to 120%. So for instance, in, uh, Broomfield, we're doing a, uh, kind of an income averaging development in Broomfield, Colorado, that is between 30% all the way up to 80% AMI.
And all this, um, financing behind this, there's no loopholes that take oversight away from, uh, local?
No, there's nothing, there's nothing that we utilize. As I was just joking about SB 35, it's not a program that I necessarily want to utilize because it forces me to do prevailing wage, and so I, you know, want to, uh, try to stay away from uh, any kind of mechanisms like that, so...
You, I think I saw something in here, you build these and you maintain them, you don't sell them off?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You build and maintain?
Yeah, that's one of our, uh, core values, is that anything we develop, uh, we have always kept. So we have never sold anything that we've developed. The only thing that we've sold are things that we've bought from churches or from other organizations. Uh, for instance, in Georgia, we had bought something about 10 years ago for a buck. And after about eight years of being in Georgia, we were done with being in Georgia, so we sold that, I think, for a buck, and that was it. So, but it wasn't something that we developed, it was just something that our, uh, CEO wanted to help out a church, so we did, and we've recently divested that, but anything that we've built, uh, and operate, uh, we don't sell. We keep it long-term.
Um, would you be willing to sit down with local seniors here and, um, hear out their concerns and things they would be, they would be potentially wanting in these facilities?
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. We always do community outreach. I always want to talk to the local senior groups and the local seniors to see, you know, what it is that they would want in a community like this, because something like this is going to take some time. Obviously, if I remember correctly, there was a previous, uh, proposal that kind of stopped, and so, you know, these developments take a long time to get going, so we would definitely want to work with the community as much as possible, so that when we get to the finish line, we have something that the community wants, the community buys in, city council wants, staff wants. So, yeah, no, we would totally be working with everybody on this.
Questions here at the council?
This might be just a little too much in the weeds, but what's your typical delivery method? Design, design bid build or design build?
Uh, we generally, obviously, go for entitlements first because I need my entitlements in order to access all the financing. Um, and then we just, you know, once we get the financing, we go directly into building permit. So we like to get our design finalized as much as possible right up front.
Thank you.
Bill's up here?
Yeah, is there a specific application procedure for a person who would want to live in the home? Is that, I mean, do we take local, uh, citizens and they apply to, to then move into these particular?
Yeah, generally speaking, there is a lottery, um, and we can, uh, wait. We, we can give preferences to people who live or work in Escalon. We, we can't put them at the front, but we can give preferences so that in the lottery, uh, they may have weighted points or something, so they have a better opportunity in order to live in, in the development. Because of fair housing, I can't say the first 20 are going to be all Escalon, but I can say during the application process, I can weight their applications more. I can give them better odds, basically, to, um, get into one of the units first.
Do you work with any other, um, companies, we'll say, out in the world that do the same thing? I know that our folks at Heritage House that are basically across the street, or were proposed to do this across from the community center, they have a waitlist as well. Is that something you could possibly work with them as well to help them out? They've got a pretty long list of folks that probably would be applying as well.
Yeah, we can, uh, I mean, obviously, you know, help those people do applications in our community. I can't say, though, I'm going to take the Heritage House...
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
Exactly, but no, we would definitely work with them. You know, we love to work with local service organizations as much as possible as well. So, uh, I'm sure there's some synergy there that, you know, could occur between the, the two organizations.
And that, uh, that waiting process you spoke of, as far as, you know, uh, giving points or however you do the lottery, is, is that something that you come up with specifically yourself? Or is that something that you're beholden to, a specific, you know, lottery approach?
Yeah, so we do a lottery approach that, uh, you know, complies with fair housing, uh, but you can give, you know, preferences to people who live or work in the community. And how you would do that would be, uh, maybe some sort of extra weight to put on the applications, some extra points if you're scoring, maybe you can give that application enough, a couple extra points or something, so... There is, there are ways to do it just so that you don't run afoul again of fair housing laws.
Thank you.
Steph, can this presentation be emailed to council?
I would say if, uh, the rest of us council don't have any other questions, maybe open it up to the public. If they've got any generalized questions, we can throw at you if you don't mind.
Sure.
Anybody's got any questions?
Yeah, so the, uh, location on the site plan, if you want to put the site plan real quick. So first phase would be, right, so you get the park there, and then going down Escalon Road, uh, the first phase would be right there.
So is this after the, the seed work?
Yes, exactly.
It would butt up against the golf course, and the current rendering appears.
Yeah.
It's going to be on the north side of the rental house.
I'd be sad, of course, when all those trees go, but it is, it is a pretty site.
Yeah, that's roughly half of it, 19 acres.
4.9.
And if we want to, I want to be, yeah.
Could we have, come to the podium?
That would ideally be what we'd want to do, is, is kind of that income averaging, uh, where you would have units set aside at an income level for people who are on social security, and then units set aside for people who, you know, may still be working or may still have a larger pension. You know, maybe not enough for, uh, you know, a current rental, but enough for like a moderate income-type rental. Yes, exactly. Because we would probably make this 55 and up, too, so we have an option of doing 55 and up and 62 and up, so we may also look at 55 and up, so... No, it doesn't, there's no like, uh, shared kitchen or anything. Everybody would have their own kitchen, own bathroom or anything. We don't do congregant care living like that, it's all independent living. Yes, yes, that's all we do. We don't do anything else but seniors. You're supposed to, uh, take, uh, a certain percentage of that net worth and calculate it into the income. That's how it normally is done in the affordable world. So if somebody comes to one of our developments, right, and they've got a million dollars in the bank, but they're living on social security, we would add 40, 50,000 a year to their income, uh, because we would expect them to... because we would expect them to pull out four or five percent. So that wouldn't necessarily occur in our development unless they hide a million dollars. But we would add kind of an investment factor to their income based on that. Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. There's nothing to hide here. We've been doing this again like sixty-one years. So I would tell everyone, all of our, you know, our rules, policies, how we've done this. And after we talk to everyone, you guys may all say, we don't want Christian church homes in Escalon. So, you know, that's, that's why we have those meetings for sure. I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't call it loopholes. We've, we've done it before where we've been in city, cities that have, you know, preferences for live work in that city. And so what it is, is for instance, two people come in with the same application, same criteria, whatever. One lives in Escalon, that person may get the apartment over the other person just because of that city preference.
That was, that was a lot of the opposition to project.
Yeah. Yeah, again, again, in the past, it's about giving, about giving some sort of weighted preference like in the lottery and such. It's not a guarantee. I'll tell you flat out, it's a guarantee. Yeah. It's all probably depend on what the eventual funding source and why, and that's why I'm looking more like a middle market type thing. I'm almost looking for something that I can almost finance myself without getting too much government subsidy in it. If I can just get a little government subsidy so that I can call it a senior development, then, you know, I'm going to be looking at potentially doing as much as I can financing ourselves. I've been handing that. Six hundred and fifteen square feet.
Before we get, before we get into too many more questions, can we make sure we come up to the podium for the questions? Just so we can have it on the record for everybody. Not everybody can hear with the stuff in the back. If you got a question, come on up to the podium if you could. Podium, please. We need you guys to go to the podium for the questions so everybody can hear it, put it on the record. For those folks that are out on the internet that want to hear, would like to hear the questions as well.
Yeah, not so much this gentleman here, but to our city council. We learned a lesson last time hopefully about process on this kind of development here. And questions have come up and we're kind of, you know, around the edges. We don't have anything in writing. People are going to want to know, they want, they're going to want like a town hall, I think is what was going on last time when our own project went out. We had a kickoff, little presentation, I think from staff and the last one. The next thing was showing up at the planning commission and people felt, you know, they got six hundred pages of what the development was and they felt like they were being ambushed. Hopefully you don't go down that road again and you think about that. Because we have, we have a document now, right, for senior development houses, Sean? So, you know, I don't even know if you've compared your project to that. There's a lot, you know, this is just get together and look at a project right now, but there's a lot to it. Hopefully, again, we don't go down that road again. Twelve hundred feet out now that we start asking people to give us their opinions and what have you, so hopefully.
Mr. Denzinger, I agree with you. I think complete transparency is always the best way to go. And, and I would like to think that we'll be able to deliver that. I feel like the council, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but they probably feel the same way. I think we'll try to do everything we can to get the community involved in the whole process.
Well, there's still, you know, bad taste out there.
Oh, I understand.
I didn't have a problem with the way it went down. It's just, that's how every project did, you know, up to that point. But we learned a lesson here. These aren't just regular projects. These are things that affect the community and community likes a little extra input before these things go down and start going through the regulatory process of being approved. So I'm not suggesting for a minute that you guys don't understand that. But I'm putting it out there right now, so, you know, everybody's on, on board with, you know, how, how you present this thing and you don't have any backlash later on saying, you know, we didn't know about it. You know, showed up at a planning commission meeting and I didn't have time to digest six hundred pages, you know, that kind of thing. So they got turned down. I, again, I don't suggest that this company or this group here is like the last developer who is, you know, in for a quick buck and didn't want to hear it and left. But I think we should avoid those things at all costs.
And, and Mr. Denzinger, I, I feel like the presentation about tonight by Mr. Stone is the exact opposite of what happened previously. Because this is not Mr. Stone saying, hey, we need approval on this. This is just a presentation as to what they would bring to the city of Escalon.
I, I would back that up and say that the previous developer didn't show up here, like Mr. Sidney here. But there was a staff presentation that did essentially the same thing. And that kicked, that started the clock going for that six month process. That was a mistake, as, as we found out. It's nice that he's here, but again, maybe stretch out the process a little bit as far as education goes and, and get the stuff out to the community so there's no backlash, you know, at the end when it shows up at the planning commission and ultimately here. And you have people hating you and you don't get reelected again for that. Oh, and one last thing, I have to forget, rent control. We just heard that there was a problem with the mobile homes getting, getting increases. People that sign contracts for rent, will they be guaranteed that or is there going to be an escalator in there for?
You know, it all depends on what the financing ends up being. We usually put, we put a cap on whatever rent increases. Generally, the core of who we serve in most of our fifty plus developments is between that kind of the extremely low income, which is the thirty percent AMI, someone on social security, all the way up to fifty percent, which may be like a small teacher salary or something. So we generally as a nonprofit do not take the max rent increases that we are offered. And I have done escalation caps with cities where they're like, you know, if you don't want to go more than three percent a year, we'll say fine. First five, ten years, nothing more than two or three percent a year, that's fine.
Just something to consider when you get the full proposal, so thank you.
I live on California Street, about five hundred yards from that track out there. Starts about eleven o'clock at night and I get the vibration from those heavy trains going through there. That looks pretty close. We are in need of it, but I don't like that setup.
The orange area, there's going to be eighty units on five acres.
Yes, exactly.
And then phase two would be another five acres on another eighty units.
Yes.
Total of a hundred and sixty units. Does a pencil light, is it feasible to do one without the other?
Yeah, we would, actually that would be part of market demand and the market analysis. It may come back that we may stop at eighty. I mean, I know some of the surrounding developments do have waiting lists. So, you know, we, we may do that first phase and say, you know what? I don't think that second phase is really necessary. We'll stop here.
My concern is, is do we have eighty seniors right now? Probably yes, but do we start after, if you don't fill up the first eighty with Escalon seniors, you start reaching out. You have to, to make it work.
And if that happens on, on phase one, we will probably stop there.
Yes.
There may not be a phase two.
Thank you.
Want to check with San Francisco because they have a very successful lottery. Where they're affordable.
Any other questions out there? When we get to the next level, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we totally are, I should say, I totally understand that this is just the first step as we go through this process. I think there's going to be some more community outreach, some more discussion, obviously, with the city manager's office and such before we even get close to submitting an actual proposal to the planning department. So we are fully committed to working with council, staff and the community as long as possible to come up with a development that works for the community. And we may actually get to the finish line and you guys may say, no, this isn't going to work for us. And so we, we, we understand the risk in this, so. I thank you guys for taking the time to listen to the presentation.
Appreciate the time you came out to give it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. So moving on to item number six, administrative matters provide direction on the sewer moratorium and future annexations. Is that you, Dominique?
Thank you, Mayor.
City manager?
Yes, thank you. So this item is coming before you, as you may be aware. We moved forward on our municipal services review and it was approved by LAFCO at their March ninth meeting. And so the two annexations that were previously approved by the council to, to move forward with, would now be able to move forward with submitting their applications, submitting revised applications as we have them on file from several years ago to move forward with annexing. However, municipal services reviews are also good for a five year time period. And so now that we have an active municipal services review and, and a, and a ruling from LAFCO and approval of that MSR that we are capable of, of annexing additional land if desired. I'm bringing that, this item back to council to provide direction as the original sewer moratorium that was put in place in two thousand and eight talks about the need for a new lift station and replacement of, of several feet of sewer piping, trunk lines throughout the city. The lift station was completed a few years ago and we are going to be finishing up phase two by the end of this fiscal year, moving on to phase three. And so we do have, in accordance with the municipal services review, EDU is available at the plant and can take additional capacity if needed. This item is also being brought to the council because we are receiving interest and inquiry on properties located in our sphere of influence that would like to submit. So just looking for any feedback or direction from council on whether we want to move forward with anything. Or, or not.
With, with the annexation, with that consideration, with the, the piping, the plumbing that's being done and scheduled for basically sometime to wrap up in two thousand and twenty-four, do we have to wait for that project to be finalized before we can add more annexation? Or is that a separate issue and we're okay now as we sit?
We are, according to our city engineer, we are okay as we sit. However, annexing property does take a lot of time. And so with the application process as well as development process and moving forward towards construction, all of those, all of the trunk line will be done before anybody's able to construct. And so timing wise, all of that stuff will be completed before construction would occur.
Okay.
So, because with annexations, they have to come to, you know, the council as well as go to LAFCO to be annexed. And so it's not just, if they're located outside of city limits, but within the sphere, they have, they have to come here to the council and they also have to go to LAFCO. And so it's basically twice as long to move forward with, with that process because they're essentially following two different agencies' protocol to obtain those approvals.
Those are case by cases decided by us here at the council. If someone wants to annex, annex property for a project.
Yes, and then, and, and the annexation process is typically submitting some type of pre-development application with your annexation, so you have a good idea of what it is that they're proposing. And in the past, it's been several years since we've had any development annex. But a lot of cities do development agreements or pre-annexation agreements. And so if that's something that council would like to do so that we're fully aware of what type of project or what the expectation is, you know, prior to moving forward with annexation, those are measures that we can take as the city to ensure that whatever lands are annexed, that, that the project that they're proposing is, is appropriate to council to move forward.
Mayor?
Yes, questions?
May I ask some questions?
Yes, please.
So for legal, since there was a resolution passed, we just, is it required a vote or is another resolution required to be issued to remove the, the previous resolution? Yes, how do you avoid the original resolution?
Yeah, I think what Dominique's looking for is just direction tonight. And then, yeah, if the council were to give direction that we want to explore modifying or reversing that, it would be in the form of another resolution. So, but tonight would just give city manager a direction and she'd come back with a resolution based on that direction.
I mean, I wouldn't want to take the guardrails off too much. You know, obviously want to make sure we are able to make these decisions, you know, one at a time.
And it would be case by case.
But obviously with things that are pending, I think there's two of them, right?
Correct. The, the, the two properties that were pending annexation have been on hold since about two thousand and eight are the, is the eighteen acre property located off Brennan and one twenty, known as the Carr Murphy Brothers property, as well as the two acre parcel behind the Saran Lutheran Church.
So is there, is there any way you can say hypothetically annex those in, but keep, you know, make some sort of exception to annex those in, you know, as of now, keeping most of the language the same?
So those two properties passed council have already given them permission to annex. So attachment A of the staff report, or excuse me, attachment B, which was a resolution passed in two thousand and twenty, was where passed council gave the city staff authorization to move those two specific parcels.
I guess what I mean is if, if we were to move those two parcels forward hypothetically, can you, does that open us up to, you know, all of a sudden, everything can be annexed in?
No, it does not.
So my thoughts on this are, it makes sense to remove the annexation, the sewer moratorium through resolution. And then moving forward, institute this pre-annexation, as you mentioned, just to keep council apprised of any potential annexations that may occur in the future. And that will give this council and any future councils, just hey, giving you a heads up. And then that will, then we, we would be able to gauge that in comparison to where we are with the sewage treatment plant work. Because if it starts turning into a free for all, you know, as Mayor Pro Tem was mentioning, we, we need to try to avoid that. And, and I mean, given that our slow growth ordinance, I'm not expecting that to happen whatsoever. But just to use caution moving forward.
So Mayor, what do you think?
I would agree. I know the other two projects are approved to move forward in their own process, which is great. Glad to see that finally moving for everybody involved with that. I want to maintain as much control as we can up here. I think that we should probably consider some sort of loosening of the strings on the moratorium so that we can see those projects and on a case by case basis, see if it's a good fit for our town.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
You said with the upgrades to the lift station, there were additional EDUs. How, how many? How, how many after that upgrade are available?
So, currently, and we, we've calculated it in EDUs because past councils over the last several years have utilized it as equivalent dwelling units. We had our engineer calculate that out, there's fifty-five hundred available at this point. Our plant capacity is eighty-four, thirty-three hundred of them are what is, is currently being used.
Thirty-three hundred.
And that's fifty-five hundred EDUs, and that would include all types of projects. And so, they're equivalent dwelling units, and each project gets a calculation. And so, now, we have that number, and we would essentially apply towards those numbers if we have an additional commercial property, and it's sewer, or sewer capacity, you know, it has so many toilets, so many this, and has so much capacity on the line. Our engineer does some type of calculation, and would make that determination on how many EDUs it, it will utilize on our system, and then those would be taken away from that fifty-five hundred. And so, we would keep tracking, removing EDUs as other projects apply. And so, that's across the board for any, any future development.
So, if we have the capacity for fifty-five hundred, and we are currently utilizing thirty-three hundred, we're roughly sixty percent of our utilization?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
LAFCO, when a project is presented to the planning commission or to council, do you report how many, that calculation that you just mentioned that the city engineer does, do you report that to either body?
No, we do not, or we have not in the past.
I would make a recommendation that we start reporting that information to council, or to the planning commission, or to both. That way, it allows council and planning commission to track that EDU number to make sure that we don't get in this similar position that we were in in two thousand eight.
We can do so, and as staff, we would also come to you if we, if we were having an issue. Like, at the time that this moratorium was put in place back in two thousand eight, I believe there was a, there's a chart attached to it, and they had calculated a hundred and twenty-seven EDUs left on the system. And that's what instituted the recommendation for a moratorium. And so, moving forward from that, yeah, we can, we can definitely incorporate that into future projects as a part of the process.
Does the eighteen-acre Carr property take into account that fifty-five hundred? Or is that fifty-five hundred separate from?
The fifty-five hundred, that project has not been approved yet, and so, the fifty-five hundred does not include that project.
Okay.
And so, they're looking at anywhere between seventy-three to seventy-five units, so they would, could take up to seventy-five of them.
And that would come off the fifty-five hundred?
Correct.
I mean, I, I would be inclined to, to maybe keep the moratorium where it's at, but make exceptions to get us where we need to be with those projects, because we're not done with the project. You know, there could be hiccups along the way potentially. And I'd hate to be in a position where, you know, we get blindsided by something. And that's just my opinion.
So, so in the, in the action that the council wants to leave everything in place and, and leave it at status quo, if we're getting requests, or people asking for information on how they could go about annexing, and we let them know we have a moratorium in place, some of them may want to, to push harder. In the past, we've had developers that have been interested in, in annexing, and, and letting them know that we have a moratorium in place. It essentially would bring them here, so where they would approach council and ask for, for some type of.
They're answer-requests types of situation?
Yeah, exception to be, to be let on an annexation. And so, in the event we don't change that moratorium, that would be what the process would essentially be, is, is staff letting them know that we're not accepting annexations at this time. And if it's something that they, you know, are at a bit about trying to move forward with, the next thing that would happen would be advising them that they need to come to a council meeting and, and bring it up at public comment.
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, what's the diff, I mean, if somebody with the moratorium can, like, with it in place, can come here and us consider annexing that piece in, what's the difference? Because if the moratorium is lifted, they still have to come and ask for us to, to consider the annexation in. So, I'm, I'm, you know, it sounds like a similar process regardless of whether there's a moratorium on it or not.
Well, I mean, the difference, yeah, it would, it would be similar, but the difference would be, they would be asking if they came, if staff advised in the moratorium, their request would really be lift the moratorium and change your policy overall, so I can apply. Whereas, if the moratorium was not in place, they would actually just already apply, and they'd be going through the staff, and then ultimately to LAFCO for annexation. So, it'd be, it'd be kind of a revisitation of this question that we have tonight, which is, what do you want to do with your policy? That, that could come from, you know, potential people that wanted to annex.
And then, I'm looking at the boundary map that's posted on our website. And it's not showing that the piece of land where we were just listening to the senior housing developed is annexed in, is that piece actually annexed in?
No, it is not.
So, that does need to be annexed in before this property is developed, is that correct?
It's city-owned property, so my understanding is that city-owned properties are not required to be annexed. That's what I've been advising, because we own it.
Yeah.
They're exempt from being required to be annexed.
We don't, yeah, the LAFCO process is much differently with city-owned parcels.
Our wastewater treatment plant is also located outside of city limits and is also not annexed.
Okay.
It's, it's my understanding, I, I could be wrong with, correct me if I'm wrong with, is, is my understanding that this, keeping it in place would, would allow us to have a little bit more oversight on potential projects trying to annex in?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, yeah, with the mori, yeah, with the moratorium in place, it puts a bright line against that. You have a little bit more control over who gets annexed.
The main reason too that we're looking for an update on the, on the moratorium as well is if you're looking, looking towards wanting to keep a moratorium to updating, updating the reasons why. Because currently, the moratorium is stating the need for a lift station and significant upgrades in accordance with the trunk lines projects, which are, which are all significantly improved since then. And so, those original reasoning for the original moratorium are, are no longer at that immediate level. And so, updating it to reflect more accurately why we went and launched the moratorium.
I have a question if we can do this or not. Because our system is antiquated, and we currently are roughly sixty percent utilized at the current moment, can we modify a moratorium that says we can only go to seventy-five percent? Because I don't want to get it close to max capacity in its current situation. It leaves us exposed to too many opportunities for financial pain. That's where we're at before we put the moratorium, because we needed to do some things. So, if we do any adjustments at all, I would be in favor of limiting that based on sewer capacity. If that's something that's possible, if other cities do, because I want to make sure we have a buffer, and we don't max out current systems.
I guess, similar to what the mayor was mentioning, I understand we want to keep some sort of level of control. But is there a mechanism that we can remove the moratorium, but institute something that once we, if we were to get to that figure seventy-five percent, then a, a moratorium comes back into place, or how do you do that?
You could honestly just refashion a, a resolution that says we have a, we, we are lifting the moratorium up to seventy-five percent. You could put different thresholds in there, whatever the council decided based upon the concerns regarding, obviously, like you said, Mayor, an antiquated system. And, you know, so, yeah, you could just pu, put that into the new resolution. You can modify it with any thresholds and triggers you wanted.
How many, how many developers, when they hear that we have a sewer moratorium in place, turn around and run the other way? Are there many? Like, does it scare developers from wanting to actually come in and develop within the city of Escalon when they hear that a sewer moratorium's in place?
I mean, I guess not scare is the word, it's a process. And so, I think there's a lot of developers out there that realize that annexation is a whole, you know, process, and so, it would take longer. I would say the ones that are interested in annexing at this point in time know that there's a process behind it, and are willing to go through the process. And that's why they're, they're continuing to ask whether or not they can. And then, also knowing that we have this municipal services review that's been completed.
Could we take the?
Improves that, improves that standard, or improves that action.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no problem.
Could, could we take the approach of revisiting the phase, once phase three is done, with a variance for the, these two properties?
I mean, if that's how, if that's what.
Is that something?
If that's how the council wants to update the resolution, we can do that.
Just a thought, I was throwing out there.
Just to revisit the discussion?
Well, because the phase three is not done yet.
Yeah, so you're suggesting bring it back that time?
Mayor's saying he's concerned, obviously, and it makes sense with an antiquated, you know, system. Maybe we need to revisit this once we get to that point, but make some variance for these properties that need to come in because of the, the nature of, of the MGs being more, I guess, so we're able to, my understanding is we're able to take on these properties, right?
So, phase three of the sewer trunk rehabilitation would be completed this next fiscal year. So, we're looking at the end of twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Which would add to that fifty-five hundred dollar, or fifty-five hundred amount?
No, 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 the fifty-five hundred is, is capacity at the plant. And so, replacing out the piping in, improves how it's getting there. Like, currently, we have a lot of deteriorated piping. But, the deteriorating piping can handle what's currently going in there, and the replaced piping that's going in is, is obviously going to improve that even more. But, the, the capacity at the plant will not change with the piping. That's what we have left at the actual plant at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, what would be the benefit of leaving the moratorium in place as opposed to what the mayor mentioned, removing, possibly removing it and adding a cap at seventy-five percent?
My understanding, and I may, may be naive in it, but is, it would allow us to have more oversight. And, in other words, you know, with all these crazy things coming from the state, we would have at least some buffer there to kind of help us navigate crazy policies. And that's what I'm thinking.
So, related to, like, if, if a project with SB thirty-five came in again, and the state of California said, okay, we're going to do affordable housing here, it's SB thirty-five, you're thinking that if the sewer moratorium is in place, it allows greater control? I mean, is that, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I think so, I think it makes them have to come through us versus going through council, or going through, through this, the staff. They at least have to come through us before they could, you know.
I would question whether the state has the authority to make us annex property.
Yeah.
To build a project, honestly.
If, if it's okay, I'd like to just jump in.
Yeah.
So, when we're talking about annexation, when we're talking about a lot of the state's housing laws, which I agree are pretty draconian, one of the things that the state has reserved cities to still have some local control over is areas where the cities have to, like you said, annex, or make general plan amendments, or make really large legislative policy land use decisions to even allow housing, or I don't know why I'm saying housing, but housing or any project in, in that area. And typically with annexations, whatever the land use designation is, you have to go through a pre-zoning land use designation change to even potentially allow what is generally ag or, you know, non-specified zoning. That has to be changed and approved by the city first. So, there are some pre-annexation decisions that the council would have to make that could be helpful safeguards, even if there was not a moratorium. I guess what I would say is the moratorium is kind of that extra level of protection, so to speak, from that perspective. But it's certainly not the only one. Now, I'm not going to sit here and say, you know, you still, you know, without looking at your sphere of influence and knowing all of the general land use designations around your city right now, I'm not going to sit here and say, oh, don't worry about the moratorium, you still have plenty of protection. I think it probably is something to look at, to see what is the current zoning in the sphere. But, that being said, general large legislative land use choices that the city council has to, can, can make at that level, there's more control than when you're talking about infill in the city that's already zoned, that's already allows housing, or already allows commercial, or whatever the project may be. You're going to have, be a lot more up against rock and hard place, so to speak, in that situation than you are when you talk about property outside the city limits and in the sphere.
That was kind of my point, is rather than have a sewer moratorium in place, have these pre-annexation measures in place to allow, to alert this council or any other council as you move forward, kind of as a checks and balances as it's moving through the process, and not keeping the current sewer moratorium in place, because it shows that we are moving forward. And we've made progress since two thousand eight by doing these. So, that's, my thoughts are to remove the annexation, or institute something with that seventy-five percent cap, and then institute these pre-annexation checks as we move along every step of the way. That way, council's kept apprised of everything that, I mean, more so related to the sewer system.
Seventy-five percent the number, though, I'd almost be more comfortable with seventy, honestly, as a first level. Keep it tighter first out of the gate, how fast do we get there? Because if it blows up and somebody finds money and decides they want to build more than we really want, that seventy percent is a quicker cutoff. If we're already in the sixty percent now.
It'd be six hundred and fifty EDUs.
You're limited to seventy-five a year.
Right. What's that, like, ten years?
I mean, just to be clear, and Dominique, I know you said this, but one EDU does not mean one house, for example. I mean, those, that's just a, that's just a number that they use as a baseline. But, you know, one project could soak up three hundred EDUs or something, I mean, it just depends on the nature of the project.
On the usage.
Just wanted to make that clear for the, for the public.
Usage, pipeline, size, those type of things.
I'd be in favor of leaving the moratorium while we kind of sort that out. It does sound like an extra layer of protection, as well as the other two parcels that were in question. The annexation has been approved already. So, it sounds like there may have been some interest in some other parcels. But, if they want to proceed with any of that, they need to come here, talk to us in the community to kind of get our blessing in order to move forward on that. So, it, it does give us the oversight that it sounds like some of us are looking for. It doesn't create any additional work for us to do as far as rewrite the resolution, or create a new resolution. And I think it's an immediate solve for our, our situation at hand.
Mr. Mayor, can we get some input from the public?
That's where I was going next, if we don't have any more comments up here, but I haven't finished up here.
I'd be interested in revisiting when phase three is completed.
I agree, we should revisit it every eighteen months or something.
I don't want to jump the gun. I mean, or, you know, that, you know, nobody can predict what's going to happen in the economy right now. And so, I would be interested in finishing up the job that we're doing right now, and then we can revisit this at a future date.
Getting onto the current resolution, we're supposed to revisit every year anyways, so.
I'd say we were supposed to be reviewing that annually, which I don't think.
Well, then, I guess, based on the resolution, we'll look at it in another year. But let's first get some input from the folks out here in the audience, if you've got some concerns or comments or questions.
Really good discussion, I like a lot of what I'm hearing. And I find myself in agreement with you, Andrew, on annexations as far as local control. When the city wants to get a loan from the state, they have to have a shovel-ready plan. I think your annexation should be based on the proposal from whatever the contractor is, and have a general idea of what's all entailed. For example, the Murphy Brothers property over there. For example, uh, the Murphy Brothers property over there, you'd like to see a circulation plan just based on how many units and where, where that's gonna come out and how that's gonna affect Brennan, uh, over here. There's only two ways in and out of there right now, and they both go through the Belatera. So, uh, people in Belatera are gonna say, well, if they're part of our community, they should be part of our LLD. So, you know, shovel-ready projects, questions asked before you let somebody, you know, into the city. I, I think that keeps the control with you, uh, keeps the control and, and keeps the people happy inside the city. You know, I don't know how many, uh, other facilities in town are, are ready to be annexed out there, but again, if they're ready to go, they should have some kind of, uh, pre-map, ready-to-go, pre-presentation, uh, so you can actually see what it's gonna look like. That would be, uh, what I wanted to say earlier, uh, with annexations there. You know, it, it is. Give the city the control. I don't care if they wanna put a limit on percentage, uh, going there, that's more control. And you can always change it, you know, based upon, uh, a shovel-ready plan that's coming to you that makes sense. You know, A or N, so that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd just like to say or suggest, uh, the city attorney brought up a good point about taking a look at the, uh, the plan and what the sphere of influence is and then factor in that we have a growth management order of seventy-five building permits a year. If this project of seventeen or nineteen acres produces, how many homes, sixty-nine or seventy? After that gets finished, that's seventy permits. And if the gentleman over on, uh, Miller wants to annex his ten acres in, well, that's a lot less than seventy-five building permits. Or, I don't know if the twenty acres at Campbell, uh, is for sale now at one time, and they could own, Frank Var owned it, and he wanted to annex in the city, twenty acres, he would do some houses. Another twenty acres, that's another, that takes up seventy-five building permits. So just what we have within the city, one possible annex, is only three years of building, seventy-five building permits a year. I guess you have to take a look at what the sphere of influence is when someone comes in and says, you don't have anything in the city, but I want this spot over here behind, uh, Hogan on Cloud that may be zoned, uh, residential. Then you'd have to take a look at it that time. But I think the sphere of influence in some of these areas that are, uh, may be zoned for residential. At seventy-five building permits a year, if you built them out for five years, well, do a calculation of how, how many houses that would be and, and what the population would, uh, increase to. So, thank you.
Building moratorium has been in place a long time. Dave Innes is a, a long time ago, Dave Innes, and the council there put that in there because they're afraid of too much of a build-out. And they wanted Escalon to maintain its identity and to keep it the way it was over long periods of time. We're talking about removing that. I don't know if that's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. Because there's a lot of complications now that there weren't back then. Things have changed. The government's made a lot more movement in terms of trying to dictate to us what we have to do and don't do. So we have to be very careful in this thing because we don't wanna give it up unless we have to. And if we don't, if we keep it, we have to make sure that it's defensible. That's the other problem we're gonna have to deal with. So I think the discussion was good tonight, but I think we're a long ways from answering the questions yet. There's a lot more studying going into this to, I think, in order to give this community what they want. Because if you pull that thing out and somehow it backfires, you're gonna deal with a lot of ticked-off people.
I don't think anybody here is looking to remove the seventy-five homes a year moratorium. I don't think anybody's looking to do that. This is more about the sewer capacity issue at this point.
That was gonna be my question. So the, just for clarification, the sewer moratorium and the slow-growth ordinance are two completely separate items, correct?
Correct. Uh, we have an ordinance, um, I believe it's entitled fifteen or sixteen in its growth management procedures, and that's where it has the seventy-five homes per year, uh, building permits, uh, per year. And then we have a separate moratorium on the sewer that's by resolution. But the ordinance is, is in the books, um, you know, and is, and is followed by staff because it's actually adopted into our municipal code.
I, I would agree with what the mayor said. I, I don't, I can't speak for my other council members, but I don't think anyone up here even wants to entertain removal of that slow-growth ordinance. So just making sure that the public is aware, we're, what we're talking about is the sewer moratorium, it has nothing to do with the, um, slow-growth ordinance.
You're telling me there's no relationship between building moratorium and our sewer capacity? Is that what you're telling me?
I don't, I was just asking staff for clarification.
And you can tell me if I'm wrong here, but here's what I believe. It's hard to defend your growth ordinance when you have capacity in your sewer abundantly. Because the first thing they're gonna come at you is to say, look, you have the capacity to grow. There's no reason for you not to grow. But if your sewer system is not abundant with massive amounts of EDUs, you have a little bit of a defense. So, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So what you're saying is if the sewer moratorium was removed, then we have no defense to push back on a proposed development? Well, it's not gonna help, let's put it that way. Okay. So that's why we'd recommend that you consider that, because anything, if we get in a situation where the state comes down heavier and harder than they are now, they're gonna look at all those things. They're gonna see whether or not you have that capacity and what's stopping you from growing. Annexation, we have about thirty-seven acres inside the city limits alone that has not been built on. We got plenty of land in town. So an annexation really isn't a consideration. You got plenty of land inside. I mean, some people are not in favor, but push comes to shove, and the state comes down heavy, now things could change. So you have the land in the city, you got plenty of sewer capacity, and the state comes at you, you're nailed.
I'll have to agree with, um, Ed Alves, that sewer capacity has always been a backdoor defense to our growth ordinance. Uh, so you, uh, like, uh, Andrew said, be very careful with that. If you open that up, you're putting a crack in the dike. So, consider it carefully.
I appreciate your input, Mr. Alves, and your input, Mr. Haskin. Um, and wish to retract my earlier statement. Because the last thing any of us wanna do is open up any, any potential issues that make this less defensible for us. So, thank you very much for your input.
When we first moved here, we live over on California Street. And on Ullery, I don't know if you guys all remember, they were gonna put four hundred and twelve homes out there. And the people fought against it, but they, for some reason, there was something in that it was gonna have to be a seven-year thing that they couldn't just build out consecutively, if I remember right. But at that time, they were gonna put four hundred and twelve homes there, and everybody fought against that. And I think that was around two thousand and eight or something like that, cause we moved in two thousand and three.
There was some consideration.
That was a big development.
I think the builder wanted to, like, guarantee a certain number of permits every year and whatnot. There was a lot of things they wanted at that point, I heard.
Yeah.
Anybody else out there? Anybody else on the internet? Bring it back to council then, um, nope, sorry.
You know, I happen to be a senior, probably the oldest one here. And, uh, I just can't see that track that they're gonna build those homes for the elderly people backed up against a railroad track. I don't think they'd be filled. It just doesn't make sense to me.
There's not a railroad track that close.
You're not old enough to know how many times an elderly person gets up to go to the bathroom every night. How much sleep he gets, and when he has a whole night's sleep, how good he feels in the morning.
Quick question.
Consideration on the choice that you make. Because the seniors are gonna live there, and I'd rather have a happy senior than a bad one.
Um, where, where do you think, um, where are you, where are you picturing the place being?
I'm sorry, I'm reading hard here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where, where are you picturing the, um, the position of this, this, uh, proposed project? Cause I think there might be a little confusion. I, I could be mistaken, but it, this, I don't think there's a railroad track where you're thinking? Wait, this, this should be up, um, butts up against the golf course?
I don't think there should be a railroad car close by to where we're gonna build.
No, it's not. I don't, I don't think so, at least.
I thought it was, the track came down from, uh, Bren- Brennan, or one-twenty.
He's thinking Liberty.
Like they were in town, and it goes out towards the golf course, don't it?
Oh, the, the part, the, what CCH was talking about was the, the place that's by the golf course. Um, you, how would you describe, like-
Arthur Road, there's no track running along Arthur. It crosses at Brennan. So it's not any necessarily closer than the current Heritage House. In fact, it might be farther away from a railroad track.
Yeah, may I just-
Than currently Heritage House.
Sir, the, the location that they're talking about is right next, that you got the community center, you got Hogan Park, you got the fee store. It's gonna be, uh, north of that location. It's, the, the tracks are way to the west. But then, it does back up to the railroad track, doesn't it?
No, no.
Not even close.
No, there's no track there.
Okay.
No.
Okay, sorry.
I know, problem.
Maybe, maybe you could pull it up on Google Maps and do the measurement for him on the screen here real quick, just so he could see. Oh, okay. It might make it easier just with the, the visual, he might be able to see that, but that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, so bringing item six back to council then, what is our pleasure seem at this point with what we would like to do? We know that the two projects are currently moving forward based on a decision in two thousand and twenty. We don't have to deal with that. Are we gonna keep the moratorium as it is? Are we gonna make changes?
I would, I would, I would propose that we keep things how they are, but make a variance for those two projects.
I don't, I don't think a variance is needed for those two projects.
There's no variance for that needed. They're already in.
Yeah, they've already been approved for annexation.
So we need to update the language in the, in the resolution, um, at all because to what was brought up previously by Mr. Alves and Mr. Haskin, we've met all of the criteria for that resolution, so do we need to update the language of that resolution? Because could we end up in a situation where somebody says, well, why do you have your resolution in place? You've met all of this criteria already.
I, I don't think we'd have to based on what, uh, council member Walker was saying. If we, I mean, if we push it back, we don't have to really technically look at this till phase three, right? I mean, the, the project's not done.
Well, the truck line projects are, are, the, the truck line project has been phased into three phases. The third phase isn't scheduled to complete until the end of next fiscal year. So if you're interested in, in doing that and revisiting it at that time, we can just mark it on the calendar to be revisited after phase three is complete.
That would seem, seem like the most appropriate time to review it.
Yeah, we could do that.
I would propose that.
So we need a motion then?
Incidence is fine on this.
Incidence is fine?
Yeah. So everybody agrees that we'll just go-
Good with that?
Yes.
Very much.
Bring this back to council for review after phase three of the trunk line rehabilitation project is complete.
Yes.
All consensus, there you go. All right, next on the agenda, council communications, future agenda items. Councilman Engel, what do we have tonight?
Uh, I don't have any communications tonight, thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilman Strumman?
I have nothing.
Councilman Walker?
Sure, so, um, thank you, everybody. Uh, I do want, I am glad that was brought up of the, um, the parcel where Taco Bell and Burger King is located and that, um, parking lot there, it's been a mess for a while. And if I can just ask Chief to go ahead and look into, I, I guess it would be Chief to look into some sort of, um, how to improve, uh, the flow of traffic there. And I'm not sure how much jurisdiction we actually have over a private property in that way. But it does look, by looking at the map, that, uh, increasing the size of the exit might help in, with the truck exits. And, and so just making that easier. Um, if you're not from Escalon, it is very hard to navigate. Um, and it's been observed that that whole shopping center, I mean, it's so nice that it's there so that we can make some money uh, with travelers coming in and out or through Escalon from the Bay Area to the mountains, but it's hard to get into it at all. Um, and so once you're in it, it'd be nice to be able to navigate in and out. So, um, I'm glad that you brought that up tonight and, um, and I hope that that can be looked at, uh, so that we can get travelers in and out of there, and it's just more pleasing to, to go in and we have less problems. And then, uh, also, just, uh, the discussion on water. Uh, I'm glad that the community is involved in what's going on with those infrastructure crop, projects and that that's getting out and more transparent into the community. Um, I would like to know the, the, how much water, um, Mr. Alves brought up, how much water we actually do have uh, and, and what that looks like underneath, uh, you know, what, how much we are going to be able to pull from and, and actually how, how much the, uh, depth of water has, uh, increased or decreased over the years and how fast that's going down and how much we have left. I personally observed the quality of my water, uh, changing within the last couple of years. And I'm excited to get groundwater or surface water in the mix as well in the, in the upcoming future. And hopefully that increases the quality of the water that's coming out of my faucet. Um, and so thank you for the discussion, everybody, tonight. I appreciate you coming out and engaging with us. And, oh, last thing, thank you for this. This is lovely. I, I love this, and I love this as a resource for our community members, not just seniors, but we should have something that's transparent like this so that our community members have places to, um, to outreach for their needs. So, um, we'll be looking into getting some information also for, um, for those, uh, different, the errands that, that are needed as well. So I appreciate your, your, uh, presentation today. And, um, I think that's it. So thank you to the community tonight.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I would piggyback on that and say, um, this is gonna be a great resource, I think, uh, to help out a lot of people. Um, so, uh, good work putting it together. Um, it's, uh, it was nice to see a lot of families out at the, um, the baseball picture day, so that was, uh, a good thing to see. Um, it was real encouraging to see a lot of, uh, people having a good dynamic out there. Um, and one thing I would mention on the, the well stuff is, you know, I don't know how much this, uh, is a testament to our aquifer, but one of my friends put in a well, um, and rechecked his well, and he set it up about sixteen feet. So, uh, hopefully that's a good sign for the aquifer in general. Um, other than that, I hope you guys have a good rest of your week.
Great, thank you. Um, make it real quick. Chief, glad to see we've got that trailer out and about. Looking forward to seeing some reports, uh, whatever it can spit out for us as far as number of cars that went by, average speeds, number of outliers, depending on how you set up your parameters for that, so that's a little exciting to see if we can report back out on that for the community and just kinda see where we're at with that. I think that'll be great to see. Um, truly understand how fast people are really going. Sometimes when you see certain cars go, you think they're going forty and they're really going thirty or whatever, so it'll be interesting to see how that falls out with their true numbers. Uh, great conversation on the senior project, first swing at that. Um, looking forward to the next steps on that, getting some more involvement with our community and staff with that, uh, project potential anyways. Um, getting more information and see what we can do there. So, great conversation by everybody. It's a good meeting, and, uh, we'll adjourn and meet you guys, uh, early next month. Thanks so much. Meetings adjourned.